Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona. It will be held December 18, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. In case you're wondering, just by strange coincidence, we all are auditioning for the same play after the meeting.[115.75][115.75](Laughter.) I just wanted to show up prepared. Now, this is the, you know, a tradition that we started, to wear our most ugliest sweaters. And if you don't bring one ugly enough, I'll provide some that are even uglier.[128.11][128.11](Laughter.) I want to thank the council for being good sports, and hopefully, there's nothing too controversially on the agenda tonight, so you can all take us seriously.[136.22][136.22](Laughter.) Our goal next year, though, is to get Marianne Jimenez, our clerk, to wear an ugly sweater. She's still resisting us, but we'll get her next year. If we could, please, have the odd one out take roll?
Councilmember Alt House is absent. Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything to report? Okay. Deputy Manager, have you got anything to report tonight?
Yes, just a couple of things, Mayor. The Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission Angel Tree served a total of eighty-three local children this year that needed some assistance during the year throughout the Verde Valley. The commission would like to thank the citizens that participated as angels and for the angels and also for providing the gifts. Also, this year's Verde Valley Shop with a Cop had a total forty kids that participated, thanks to all the officers and volunteers who took time out of their busy schedules to participate in the events, and all the donors that made it possible. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is call to the public, and this portion of the agenda set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and we limit comments to a five-minute time period. So if there's anyone in the audience tonight that would like to address the council, there are yellow forms in the back, and hopefully, a pen, and fill out a form, hand it up here, and we'll get you in front of the council. So I'm going to start as I received these, and first up is Teri Clements. Ms. Clements, welcome.
My name is Teri Clements, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood. Been here for almost twenty years. There's something that I wanted to bring up that I hope the council might see fit to consider. At the budget sessions that I attended earlier this year, there seemed to be unanimous agreement among the city council members to cut any unnecessary expenses and to generate revenues for maintenance, infrastructure, and reserves. And I guess my question is, what if the city could accomplish both of these goals without compromising its ability to meet its responsibility as city residents and without increasing the tax burden on the residents for city services? I think there may be a way. Cottonwood has an asset that carries a large amount of debt. It has a market value that is significantly higher than its outstanding debt, and it's not needed by Cottonwood now or in the future. So it's worth a lot of money, and we don't need it. And the asset I'm talking about is that part of our city water utility that serves the Verde Villages. By way of background, it is my understanding that some years ago, the city bought the water utility, including the wells that service the Verde Villages, from a private water company that lacked the resources to meet governmental water quality requirements like arsenic remediation. The city has met those requirements and others, thereby creating an even more valuable asset that, in my opinion, we should cash in on to meet our other needs like repair and replacement of infrastructure and reserves. According to the Arizona Corporation Commission, I did a little search online, there are more than four hundred water systems in the state of Arizona. Three hundred and fifty of those are private companies. It looks to me like there's a large pool of potential buyers. I would like to propose that the city council give this matter serious consideration. It's not often that an opportunity like this comes along. Another factor favoring this proposal is that we may need the proceeds from such a sale sooner than we think. Many experts think a recession is likely in 2020. We have painful reminders of the damage done by the last recession of 2008, including depleted reserves and deferred maintenance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next is Kelly Wilson. Evening.
Thank you guys so much. I didn't really plan on speaking. I just wanted to come out in support of Raina Avalon with the Homeless Coalition. My name is Kelly Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of the Old Town Mission, and she has written a grant to go before you guys in January, and I just think it's so important in Cottonwood that we have transitional housing and something a step further. And I know in Sedona, they're looking at doing a women's and children's shelter, and I think those things are so vital and important, because we can only do so much with providing food and clothing, but if they have nowhere to lay their heads at night or nowhere to get the help to reside, they can't continue and build their lives further from that. So I just appreciate you guys so much, and I just ask when that grant comes opened in January that you would really consider it, and I think we're making positive steps in Cottonwood, and I see us all working together, and Raina's doing a fabulous job with the Homeless Coalition, and I just think it's a wonderful thing. So if you guys look at that in January, we would just so appreciate it, because I think it's just one more step that Cottonwood really needs, is just a little bit more affordable housing here in Cottonwood. So thank you guys so much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Joy Mosley.
Mayor Alinsky, Vice Mayor and City Council, I appreciate this opportunity to speak again on behalf of our homeless neighbors, our neighbors without homes. I've been involved with the coalition since 2014 and stood before you with one person one night for two years, and so appreciated your support. And now that we've officially organized and have all the paperwork, shall we say, in place as a three, 501(c)(3), that we are really looking forward to providing alternatives to homelessness in Cottonwood, and the opportunity to use this community development grant for transitional housing would certainly be a benefit to our neighbors without homes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you, Joy.
Okay, we have Christina Hopper up next.
Hi.
Evening.
Hello. I'm a volunteer at the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Drop-In Center, and there's a real need for transitional housing. We really need to push forward and make that happen. We have a little center now, we need a larger center so we can offer more services, and there's a real need in the community for it. So I'm really hoping that you will give us the grant in January that we need to purchase a building and have transitional housing. And housing is really hard to find, especially affordable housing. I look every week for people, and it's just really hard to find. So I think Raina came up with a great plan for the transitional house, and I just am totally in support of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, next we have Naomi Barkonic.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm also on the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Board, and I'm going to read this so that I don't go over my five minutes. Maybe you all know about our mission statement, have you seen it? Identifying and creating real solutions, and we have giving a hand up. So thanks to the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Committee, we've been able to open a weekly day drop-in center from one to five every day of the week, and we can also have an overnight shelter at the same place for twelve homeless people when the temperature is thirty-five degrees or below. Our day drop-in center opened August 6th of this year, that's like only five months ago, and to date, we have served almost two hundred different individuals in various ways, like job search, apartment search, food, a place to get out of the heat, and now lately, a place to get out of the cold. In these five months, we have certainly realized that homelessness is here to stay in the Verde Valley, and yet, the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition doesn't just want to be limited to giving the homeless a handout. We want to fulfill our mission statement that says we are not only identifying needs, but we're also creating real solutions by giving the homeless a hand up and not a hand out. This grant, CDBG, would allow us to obtain a building here in town that could be renovated to not only house our weekly day drop-in center and the overnight shelter in winter, it would also allow us to have ten bedrooms available to those individuals who really want to get out of homelessness. They would be the ones who are working but just don't have enough to make ends meet to afford a place to live. These individuals would have use of these bedrooms at a charge from us, but some of the monies would go certainly to our expenses, but the rest of the monies would be used to open a savings account for each one of those individuals. So then in three or four, six, seven months, there might be enough money in their savings account for them to pay for a security deposit and an apartment. Yes, maybe it is a dream, but it is doable, because we are committed to creating real solutions for the homeless, and it's not a want, it's a real need to help those that just need a hand up to become productive citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Matthew Kelly.
Yes, hello, Matthew Kelly from Cottonwood. Good to see you guys. I'm the Executive Director of the Verde Valley Sanctuary. I've been watching this project for a while and trying to support it. They've impressed me with their sincerity, their persistence, their creativity, their writing skills. I think it's a good synergy with the law enforcement aspect of the town, the business aspect. Research says that about seventy percent of the people that are homeless in the area are related to the area. They're not outsiders. They're people that are on the margins of society, but they're not really outsiders. It's kind of a surprising statement. We're really trying to take care of our own people as a whole, so the sanctuary certainly is supportive and will help them in any way we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Next, we have Carol Quazou.
I'm glad we have enough chairs for everyone tonight.[932.01][932.01](Laughter.)
Good evening, Council. I think the things, many of the things I was going to say, they already said, so I don't need to say it again, but I will tell you that I have lived in this community for over forty years. I've raised my family in this community. I've worked with this population for over fifteen years, and I feel like the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, which I am a board member, is doing work that has needed to be done for a very long time, and we couldn't have done it without your support. That got us started. But what we have garnered in this community is community support through the churches. I just, every day, somebody is asking me, how can I help? And so I just really want to say, the time is right for this project. The building that we're looking at is perfect for this project. You know, there are just times in life when everything just kind of lines up the way it's supposed to. You know, for me, a woman of faith, you know, that's God, and I just feel like we are moving in the right direction. So I just ask that in January, when you're looking at these community block grant dollars, that you very much consider this project, and thank you very much for your time, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, Ryan Block.
Evening, Council. Thank you guys for giving us the time. I'm also in support of the, this CDBG grant money. I think, I've been here for thirty years, a little over thirty years, I've seen homeless come and go. It's important to me that this project takes off, because there's really not a lot of other solutions. There's lots of other people coming to try to get this money. My concern is that people will die if there's not some kind of shelter. I mean, it is below freezing, and they've got nowhere else to go. So my concern is, this will help alleviate that and provide all kinds of other stuff. So I just wanted to show my support, and as a resident in Cottonwood, I've been here my whole life, so that was all. Thank you guys for considering that next month.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Rick Rosenzweig.
Evening.
Hi. Mayor, Council. I'm a commercial real estate broker in the area, and I'm also thinking in terms of the favorability of the grant next month for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. The, Raina approached me to help find a building for this, because this is so important to find the right location for something like this, and it just so happens that there's a building available on Fifteenth Street, right behind DES, so it's a, it's a location that's generally not in the public eye, and there's, aside from the building itself, there's a lot next to it that people can use for recreation or whatever. But an interesting thing about this particular building, first of all, it's got thirty-six hundred square feet, so it's got quite a bit of room to house people, and just as a little sense, a little bit of humor here, it just so happens that this particular building contains two railroad cars. And so some of the homeless might be, might feel at home.[1145.15][1145.15](Laughter.) It's rooms that could be recreated in there. But anyway, I just want to mention, this is, if anybody, once anybody gets a look at this location, it's hard to find a spot, I think, and so centrally located in town, and yet, out of the public eye, so it won't disturb most people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenzweig. Have I missed anyone in the audience tonight?
She's gone now.
Okay. Step on up, and you can, you can hand in your sheet later, that's fine, yeah.
Evening.
Hi. I'm with Cap of Charities. I just wanted to say I support the Verde Valley Coalition's transitional housing proposal. We see people every day in need of more housing options. We host Front Door, which is coordinated entry to help people find the most appropriate housing option. It doesn't expand our resources, it doesn't give us more resources, but it does help us try to find the most appropriate housing, and we see people who need more options. So we just would support that. We work in collaboration with the coalition, and they do great work, so we're in support of that.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Wagoner.
Thank you.
Any other folks in the audience tonight that wish to address the council? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we move on, then, to approval of the minutes of the work session of November thirteen, 2018.
Can I move to approve the minutes of work session of November thirteenth, 2018?
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Now we roll into unfinished business. We have two items tonight under unfinished business. The first is ordinance number 654, Amending the City's Zoning Ordinance to Prohibit Flag Banners, second and final reading. Evening, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Ordinance number 654 is an amendment to Section 405, basically putting in flag banners as prohibited along with banners. Banners are already prohibited. Since the first reading, we did have a gentleman come into the office expressing concern over this amendment. He does have a business with a flag banner in town. I'm not sure if he's here tonight. He mentioned he might come to make comments regarding it. That's the only comments, questions, concerns that we've had directly to our office.
Okay. Do you want to share, just for the benefit of the public, where we are in this process? The Planning and Zoning reviewed this, and...
Yes, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval to council at their November meeting regarding these flag banners throughout town. We do have two commissioners here who can give you input on their perspective if you'd like as well.
Okay. And then, again, just for, to be clear, this, previously, we enforced flag banners, but there was some discrepancy in the way it was defined, and...
Correct. We do currently define banners themselves as prohibited, as an everyday sign. They are allowed for temporary signs with special events. You can do them for grand openings, and it only states banners. We were looking at putting in, basically, the wording of flag banners as well to clarify any discrepancies on that.
Okay. All right. Does council have any questions for staff?
I do have questions. So just for clarification, because driving around and thinking about this and looking at what's out there, and I know somebody had asked about it before, but the man that, you know, flops around all over the place is, is that? And it says sale on it?
Those are technically prohibited as well. Any sort of animation, animated sign or balloon-type thing like that that could be distracting is technically prohibited.
Okay. And then I did see one, it's a feather banner, and it's out near the sidewalk, but it doesn't have any script on it, it just looks like an American flag.
Yeah, that wouldn't be considered a sign, so that wouldn't be affected.
That's all I forgot, thanks.
Are there any folks in the audience tonight that would like to address the council on this item? Chairman Williams?
Please.
Thank you for being here. I feel like I just saw you recently, when was that?[1416.15][1416.15](Laughter.) Might have been last night, huh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, ladies, Bob Williams, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, this came up before us, you know, when I originally, we originally saw these, there was a couple around town, and whatever, and whatever, but it seemed like we're getting a proliferation of these now, and a lot of them have not been really built and maintained. I noticed Verizon in the Frye Center put up some new ones finally, but we've worked for years, my years, on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last nine years to tone down our signs. The businesses that come before us have been very cooperative in their signage, and so we don't, we want to make it, we appreciate, you know, businesses needing signage and advertising, but we don't want to be another, as we call it, Prescott Valley, with big neon signs and banners and everything going all over the place. So this is where we, we sort of drew the line, we thought this was a good remedy for that. They have some temporary need for banners and signs, they can do that, but on a permanent basis, we had some real concerns. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Chairman?
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else out there this evening would like to address the council on this item? No? Okay. Well, we discussed it before, and I don't have anything new to share with council. I think you can tell just by looking at us that we were a tasteful bunch of people.[1535.74][1535.74](Laughter.) We'd like that to be reflected in our city as well, so...
No text.[1542.15][1542.15](Laughter.)
Anyway...
And I agree, I mean, I'm a big supporter of a business being able to have signage, and I think it's one of the most cost-effective ways to market a business, but I think the wording, the clarification, the few words that we're inserting are more for clarification purposes, and when, I mean, technically, I think you could argue that these were already prohibited under the old wording, and we're just clarifying to make it a little bit more clear. So I do support this clarification. I think it makes it more clear for the business owners as far as moving forward. So with that, I'd make a motion, I move to approve ordinance number 654.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Henry, and a second by Councilmember Howdige, and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes, and please, if we could have the clerk read ordinance number 654 by title only.
Ordinance number 654, in ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city zoning ordinance by amending Section 405 signs by amending Section B definitions, three banner, and E regulations applicable to signs in all districts. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, next and last under unfinished business is ordinance number 655, Amending the City's Zoning Ordinance by amending Section 418(c)(1) zone, light commercial, by amending Section D property development standards, five, minimum rear yard, second and final reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 655 is an amendment to Section 418 regarding front and rear setbacks and landscape requirements within (c)(1) zones in the Arts and Entertainment District. This is brought about by several potential projects, past and present, assuming the future, with some of the undeveloped land, where meeting those current existing setbacks just isn't feasible due to the size of the property, location, and how it would look with the surrounding properties. So this gives staff the ability, the direction, to modify those on a case-by-case basis to allow the business to fit in, look similar to what's already there.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ellis? Anyone here tonight that'd like to address the council on this item? Okay. Again, this is a second reading, we've gone over this before, and I think it certainly makes a lot of sense, so...
I move to approve ordinance number 655.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Matthews seconded it, and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes. Yeah, we could have the clerk read ordinance number 655 by title only.
Ordinance number 655, in ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city zoning ordinance by amending Section 418(c)(1) zone, light commercial, by amending Section D property development standards, five, minimum rear yard. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, up next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have two items tonight. First is extension of premises liquor license permit application submitted by Brenda Clauston, licensee for Colt 804, located at 804 North Main Street. And second item is lease agreement with the Experimental Aircraft Association for land at the airport. I'd like to pull the second item for discussion, and is there any other item that a member of the public would like to have pulled for discussion? Okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the consent agenda item number one.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it, and roll call vote, please. Not necessary?
Not for...
Okay, excuse me, so then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. And item two is lease agreement with the Experimental Aircraft Association for land at the airport. Mr. Horton, did you want to brief us on this?
Mr. Mayor, I think the discussion among staff and the manager and Morgan and I is such that, and Morgan, looks like he's stepping up to maybe provide a little more color commentary, but I think we're going to ask that we pull this item tonight while we do a little more work on it.
Steve was being really polite and not saying that I made several mistakes on it. There's several things we need to clarify as well as renegotiate a few items, so we would recommend we table that and bring it back to you at a later date.
Okay.
I'm Uwe Jabel.
I'll second. Okay. Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good, thank you. Okay, let's move on to new business then. We have five items tonight under new business. First up is resolution number 2973 and 2974, appointing members to the Parks and Rec Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission. Ms. Wilber.
Good evening. Amanda Wilber is the HR manager here. Been a while since we've brought some warning commission members to you. Tonight we have two seats that need to be filled on the Parks and Rec Commission. They were both advertised, we had two applications received, one from Edna Ahrens and the other from Donna Fulton. The Parks and Rec Commission consists of seven members. Right now, we have these two positions that we are looking to be seated, as well as one partial term that still needs to be filled. Both Ms. Ahrens and Ms. Fulton meet the criteria to serve on this commission and staff doesn't have any reasons why they should not be appointed to this level. Both Ms. Fulton and Ms. Ahrens have let me know that they would be here tonight in case you'd like to speak with them.
Great, very good. And again, just as a refresher, the reason why we're not going through our regular process of the committee, the selection committee that would make a recommendation to council is because we have two vacancies and only two applications received, so otherwise we'd kick off a process where it's a, I can't even think of the name of it right now.
It's evaluating each of them.
The scoring matrix?
Yeah, scoring matrix.
The blind review.
Say it again?
The blind review process.
Yes. What's the name of the committee? There's a, we gave it a special name.
Applicant Review Committee.
Applicant Review Committee, thank you, yeah. So, anyway, that's the reason why, but I would like to hear from both applicants tonight, if they're here. Yeah, and we'll start...
It's Ahrens.
With Edna Ahrens, Ms. Ahrens?
Yes, spelled wrong.
Right.
I moved to the Verde Valley in 05, or started moving to take care of my mother and wound up staying. I am an Arizona native, I was born and raised in Phoenix and have lived all around the world. I chose to stay in Cottonwood after my mother passed away because I like this small town and I, when I originally began on the Parks and Rec, I didn't know all that they did. So, I'm very much in favor of this and am very willing to serve in this position.
Thank you, Ms. Ahrens.
Thank you.
And Ms. Fulton, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us why you are interested in this position, please?
Hi, everyone. My name is Donna Fulton and I'm interested in serving as a volunteer on the Parks and Rec Commission. I've lived in Cottonwood for almost 20 years and owned and operated my business here, which was Pinion Bistro Restaurant, until I retired in 2012. My desire to live in Cottonwood is due in part to the recreational opportunities available here. I'd like to help the city fulfill its mission of inspiring a vibrant community by providing recreational opportunities for people of all ages. I've been a member of the Rec Center for several years. Exercising there has enhanced, does enhance my health and well-being and I know many others feel the same way. In fact, I know several people who have moved here because of it. They made their retirement decisions based on, you know, the recreational opportunities here and the wonderful Rec Center that we have. And in addition to the exercise, the social benefits are also important to me. I've met many wonderful people there and some have become friends. That's great. Recently, I attended a meeting at Riverfront Park put on by the city staff. I was impressed by the ideas put forth. They had hired a marketing team to come in and some of the things that they have planned for the future of the park are fantastic. And also, the feedback that the local residents gave, you know, I think there's a real need for recreational opportunities for really young children, you know, that seems to be a little bit lacking in this area. So, I look forward to having the opportunity to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission and to help preserve and enhance recreation in Cottonwood.
Great. Well, thanks for being here tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
One thing that impressed me most about your application was that you quoted our mission in there and I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Okay, council, how would you like to proceed?
Make a motion that we approve resolution number 2973 and 2974, appointing members to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. Do you want us to name the members?
If you can just go ahead and put the names on the record.
Edna Ahrens and...
Edna Ahrens and...
Donna Fulton.
Donna Fulton. Sorry, ladies.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Holtz made the motion and Vice Mayor seconded it. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudiggy?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes, thank you. If we could, please have the clerk read resolutions number 2973 and 2974 by title only.
Resolution number 2973, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Edna Ahrens a member of the city of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission and establishing her term of office. Resolution number 2974, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Donna Fulton a member of the city of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Ahrens, thank you for reapplying, glad you're back on and welcome to, Ms. Fulton.
Yes.
Yeah, there you are.
Thank you both.
Okay, so staff will contact you soon about how to, you know, the hazing and everything that we run you through. All right. Okay, moving on to second item is progress report from the Old Town Association and request for funding for the 2019 budget year.
Good evening, council members. I am, actually, let Donna...
Brenda introduces me. Okay. Hi, I'm Brenda Clauston, I'm the president of the Old Town Association and this is my fabulous treasurer, Jim Ariola, and Christian is right here as well. I didn't know Christian, but he's going to give the presentation on our progress and then we'll chime in with this.
Great.
So, y'all received an update report on the Old Town Association. My just personal introduction, I'm Jim Ariola, I own the Red Rooster Cafe across the street here in Old Town along with my nephew Shane. I just moved to the area about a year and a half ago, so I'm getting a little bit more involved in the community. So, this past summer, the Old Town Association kind of regrouped and elected a new board of five, including myself and Brenda and three others, as well as a non-voting member. Christian from the Chamber of Commerce is our fiduciary. In addition to that, we've engaged the accounting firm of Sterling Financial for accounting oversight. We've paid all of our outstanding debts, we've continued or done two events this year, the Safe Night on Halloween and also the Chocolate Walk and the VIP Chocolate Walk, which raised about $8,000 for the Old Town Association. We've adopted new policies to prevent future mishaps similar to what happened in the past. We have put together a 2019 budget, which is $20,000 to $25,000 in expenses and $20,000 to $25,000 in income. $10,000 of that in income is a request for a grant from the city, which has been done in the past. So, we respectfully request that $10,000 contribution from the city. You know, just a little plug for the Old Town Association, our goal is to promote Old Town, but I think, you know, the vibrancy of Old Town really leads to tourism for the entire community and really benefits the entire town of Clarkdale and even the whole Verde Valley. That's, you know, it's my quick summary, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Brenda?
Well, as I've said before in presentations, it's been a lot of work getting up to this point, but we are really excited and happy that we are as strong as we are, we have a great board, we all work together really well, and there's an energy in the board that is very refreshing right now. We've already started planning next year's events and we want to make sure that the ones we have done, this slash Chocolate Walk and Safe Night and VIP Night, we continue to do what had been done before, but now we have that under our belt, we want to enhance the activities that we've already done, make them a little bit more bigger, more inclusive to the rest of the community, more exciting, more profitable. So, we've got some really good ideas that we've already started working on and we're going to take those ideas into the next year. Just an example of a couple, we're trying to put together a spring event that includes the wineries, breweries, cooking, restaurants, all the restaurants in town are going to be able to participate, art, all kinds of music, things like that. So, there are more events coming that can generate income for the OTA.
We're considering another Run for the Roses, Solace race. We'd like to somehow be involved in promoting the farmer's market again, you know, we'd like to keep that going with the city's help and obviously we're open to suggestions as well, so...
That's right. So, we're just, we're in a good place, it's a strong group and we're very happy and looking forward to the future.
Great.
What we can do.
Very good. Any questions? Questions from council?
No.
Okay. We're free to meet, you know, in the future or answer questions that the council may have.
Yes, exactly, anytime.
Okay. Did Mr. Oliver DeRio want to make a presentation as well?
I was going to, sorry.
Really, I really liked your getup too, by the way.
I wanted to apologize for my appearance, not quite as professional, but I heard you all were kind of doing this. We had a holiday cheer at the chamber office, we still have a lot of goodies by the office, so please, if you're available, come see us tomorrow.
Okay.
We open all day, have coffee, cookies and all that kind of good stuff, so I figured I'd join you.
I just assumed you were auditioning for the same play we all were.
I just want to echo, you know, what they've said, they've come a really long way, quite proud of the progress that they've made in a very short amount of time, able to pull off two very large events. I think we all took a lot of notes at the Chocolate Walk and the VIP and I think there's a lot of ways for us to improve on that. And, you know, some of the areas that we are and have focused on is marketing as well. The chamber has always seen the Old Town as a destination and a destination driver, so we will always continue to market it. It's great to have the support of the individuals and the merchants in town to work on that as well. A lot of what we've done has been the focus of social media, marketing, as well as improvements of the website. And the hope is that with funding from the city, they will again be able to join the Cottonwood Marketing Coalition, which is the co-op marketing through the Office of Tourism. Again, things are moving forward in a very positive way. One of the things that I've been very excited about is that this group is planning for the future, for when they are not going to be the board and there will be other members coming in and how do we maintain this progress moving forward. So, they've taken it and really stepped up. Quite proud of it.
Good, very good.
One thing I do want to mention is the transition to partnering with...
If you could step closer to the mic so we can get you, thank you.
Of course. I'm not used to being behind a microphone, but the transition, working with the chamber has been fantastic. I'm just so pleased that it's going so well and we're so grateful to have Christian and the chambers' help. It's just made our ability to do what we do just profound. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you and it's just been a great, he assembled the report for us, I mean, just put together this amazing presentation. I had nothing to do with it, he did the entire thing and we studied it and Jim took some part of it and I just wanted to thank him publicly. The other thing is that we want to, we want to increase participation in Old Town to the rest of the community and we're working on ways to do that. We want to, like I said before, have it be more inclusive and have a lot more events that everyone can go to, not just, you know, Old Town, so...
Sure.
And we're just, we're really moving forward in a new way that is going to be, we're going, we just have a lot planned, so we're excited to do that.
Great. We certainly had an uphill battle, given the circumstances a year ago, so I commend you all for your efforts, I have a lot of confidence in your new board and I know you're doing a great thing, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly pleased with the partnership too with the chamber, I think that that can only bring benefit to both organizations.
Correct.
Yeah. So, where are we on their funding for this year? We've given them, they've invoiced us and...
Mayor, council, we don't have, we don't have in the budget, as you recall, when we were putting the budget, there were in turmoil, so we went ahead and held it off until we actually got the, kind of like the union between the OTA and the chamber put together and got a report and got some status and got some updates on them. Currently, we don't have it on the budget, so if you do make a decision to go ahead and fund them, I've got some ideas on where we can go ahead and get the funding from or allocate the funding from.
I've got a question regarding, regarding the financing, are they, OTA eligible for the funds like the chamber and business development is from the bed tax?
Right now, all of our bed tax goes to only two categories and neither two is the Old Town Association.
But, is what they do eligible to receive those funds?
I would, I, that'd be a kind of more of a legal question, mainly because it's usually for marketing of the city and that's probably something that Steve could...
I'm going to, I'd want to look at the foundational documents, the articles and the bylaws, but I'm thinking, what I understand of the OTA would be consistent with what we could use bed tax for.
Okay, thanks. So, we're going to be convening at our retreat in January, so I think this would probably be a good time to discuss how and, you know, what mechanism we use to fund the OTA in the future.
As we have done in the past, we just go ahead and put them in as a line item, provided everything, and the reports come in on a regular basis as we have had them in the past. I would suspect that we're probably more on top of it this year than we have in other years. The two areas that I think if council chooses to is we can go to council contingency, you have about $14,000 you can use there, or the other one is our undesignated reserves. We have about $50,000 that we always set aside for things that council still might have in the works. So, if, it's up to council to decide which of the two, and if you make the motion to, I'd appreciate if you'd tell me which of the two we'd like to allocate it.
I have a question.
Please.
I thought, are we talking about this current budget cycle or 1920?
1920.
So, I appreciate the progress report, but personally I'd like to have this discussion as the mayor suggested, when we're looking at our outside spending as a whole, you know, assuming that that's all right for you. I just, we're talking about it in a vacuum tonight and it's a little...
Okay. According to what's on the agenda, it's funding for the current 2019 cycle.
1819?
1819 cycle, so that would be something that we would have to deal with either today or in the near future for this particular cycle.
I guess I'm a bit confused too, because I thought, I assumed you were going to ask about the 1920 budget, I thought we'd made you whole for the 1819.
No, 1718.
I believe, I believe the last billing or invoicing that you received from them was for the first and second quarter of 18.
1819 cycle.
Your new budget starts...
I mean, excuse me, 1718 cycle, closing their 18 cycle.
Third quarter of fiscal...
Ending June 30.
June 30, 2018, right.
That's what I thought.
So this is requesting for the current budget cycle, right?
Okay, got it. Well, in that case, how would we like to proceed?
I'm in favor of awarding that $10,000 tonight.
I'm sorry, go ahead. My perspective is that I would prefer that we pulled it from our council contingency, because I really have preferred not to pull anything from our undesignated reserves unless an emergency. So that's just my thought.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
If Mr. Horton can give us some information at the retreat about using the bed tax, I think I might be more comfortable taking that $10,000 from the bed tax than pulling it from our reserves.
Okay.
In the future.
But for next year's budget or the budget we're working on shortly?
Right, we can't do that this year.
But for this year, do you think you would be favorable to pulling it from contingency or undesignated reserves to make them whole for this year?
I kind of think I'd like to discuss it further.
Okay.
I think it's possible, but need a little more information than what we have tonight.
Okay.
I think we've been over six months through the budget and we haven't used that contingency. And how much is that?
14,000.
14. May I add, this year with the increase in the 5% or .5% sales tax that we just did, that portion of that bed tax will not be going to the Chamber, sorry. But we're already with understanding that they still maintain the 3%, so we do have, we will have some money for the future to go ahead and fund similar type projects provided they conform to what's necessary for bed tax requirements.
We also clarified that 85% of that 3% goes to the Chamber, 15% goes to CEDC.
Right. So, so, excuse me. So what I'm getting at is if we're going to discuss it, I think that the point of the bed tax may be a good discussion for the strategic.
Right.
But for this particular instance, I think they're asking for it for this particular year.
Sure. I too am comfortable pulling $10,000 from our contingency. I think, like Councilman Matthew says, we're halfway through and we haven't pooled any. I don't see anything coming up that would, you know, I mean, we can always shift things from other places if we absolutely have to.
And it's my thought that you have far and away met your responsibilities when we first went into this. I don't think any council member was comfortable with providing you with any funding. And what you've done is you've really stepped up to the plate and set some really great goals, taken away any kind of lack of confidence that we might have in the organization, and really, you've done a spectacular job, so I'm very comfortable with giving you the 10.
If I might also just share, in the report, you'll see that the Chamber has already also absorbed nearly $8,000 in expense that would normally come out of that original $10,000. Most of that would have been $6,500 from the co-op marketing and roughly 1,500 in a commercial that's running on Sedona Now Television, that's running through July of '19.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So is this a straight year budget or a fiscal year?
When I was talking about 2019, it was a calendar year.
Okay. So then, that's why I misunderstood. I apologize. So we're looking at the coming Chocolate Walk, not this one that's already passed and the fall of it.
Those expenses and everything has already been covered.
Yeah, because you've already paid those.
Right. Yes, we have. Correct.
Okay. And I did want to, so I misunderstood, I apologize. But I did want to comment and thank Jim, Brenda and Christian, because you have put in a lot of work and you've implemented some new marketing tools that I think are great. For example, the weekly business spotlights on Facebook, those pop up on my feed, and it's every week something new and interesting about a business, a sale that a particular business is having, and I think it's a really neat thing. So I do like the hard, appreciate the hard work and like the direction you're moving in. And I don't have a problem, I apologize that I just completely misunderstood the request.
Yes, part of the problem is you're on the city, or it's a fiscal and we're on the calendar.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion?
Please.
Let me get back there real quick. Oh, I move to go ahead and provide the $10,000 funding to the Old Town Association through this council's contingency funding.
Second. Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Haudig seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is discussion, possible direction to staff, legal action regarding use of this year's tribal state gaming compact proceeds from the Yavapai Apache Nation. So this comes up year after year, and we have kind of a rundown of what we've received the last four years from these Prop 202 funds. So manager and I met briefly and talked about some possibilities of where we could apply these funds, and I just wanted to present it to council and see what you all think. If you have any other ideas, we can certainly talk about those. I think we're expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 18,000, I would imagine. And we're very appreciative of that money, and it's nice to fund things. It says in here that we can fund things that, for government services that benefit the general public, including public safety mitigation of impacts of gaming and promotion of commerce and economic development. So essentially, anything. I know Jerome has used this to, you know, upgrade their park in the past. We used this money last year for the.
Civic Center.
For the Civic Center, the clubhouse. So again, certainly open to ideas and a conversation on how we should spend the money.
So you, Mayor, excuse me. So you have at the end of this, we've got suggestions of three items that it could be applied to. That's curtains for the, window dressings for the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse, fund a portion of our riverfront trail plan, and flashing crosswalks lights at the school zone signage on Mingus Avenue. What is, do we have an amount for each of those topics?
I don't. I don't know if staff is prepared with that amount. I think the flashing crosswalk lights came up just recently. We had a gentleman from the school district come in and request that.
20,000, I think.
I think it would be about 20.
Yeah, that was my question, will this 15 to 18 fund any of these in their entirety?
And I don't even know exactly how much they're going to give us this year, so it's, it is kind of a...
Just guesstimate, yeah.
It would be very difficult to determine exactly how much. However, regardless, regardless is whatever council decides, and if we can't fund it fully, we'll get pretty darn close. You're right, the flashing lights were anywhere between 15, I think $20,000, roughly about there. I think you has may have a fairly close amount to the curtains that will be, would be necessary at the Cottonwood Clubhouse. And also, as it's mentioned here, funding a portion will go as far as we can if council decides to do the riverfront trail plan.
Mayor Council, as far as the trails plan, we, again, we have that State Parks Grant for around $107,000. We're still going through the NEPA study process, gets bounced back and forth between A.D. State Parks, A.D. State Parks, and then we have to develop a new map, kind of thing is where we're at right now. So that, the trails project for Riverfront Park and moving forward, $15,000 would always help. It allows us to get more linear feet accomplished. However, I wouldn't say necessarily that's a priority to use that $15,000 unless Richard has something different. The curtains for the clubhouse, right now we finished the first phase of installation on pre-wiring for the AV system, and then we're hoping to button that up around January. The curtains would be the icing on the cake for that facility, allow us to get it up and ready to use. There was about $8,000 approximately of last year's casino money that we've been saving to put towards curtains, so that $8,000 along with the $15,000 would get us quite a bit. We do know there is also a big need for the schools as well. So the cost for the stage is going to be around 20, $15,000 to $20,000. And that's two front curtains and then also the back curtains. That's all new material. So you have the front two, and then the back is kind of blocked off with black curtains. The window dressings are going, looking like they're going to be Roman shades, and then two dressings on the side along with the top piece to really make that facility look fantastic. We're looking probably around $12,000 for that.
Okay.
I'll just give you my preference, which, I mean, I want the clubhouse to get opened fast, but my preference is going to be the crosswalk lights, because we're talking public safety and we're talking our kids, so that's where my priority is going to lie.
I agree. I agree with the public safety aspect, and I believe that when the gentleman was in here from the school, at one time they'd agreed to pay a portion of that, and then I believe they kind of backed out of that because somebody else got one without participating in that. But if for some reason this money did not cover the full expense of that, I'd be interested in knowing whether they would like to kick in just that little bit extra to make that happen. And if they were willing to do that, this would be my preference.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, I think we're all in agreement then, so let's have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the funds from the, this year's tribal state gaming compact proceeds from the Yavapai Apache Nation to be used for the lighted crosswalk on Mingus at Cottonwood Community School.
Second.
Okay, Mr., Councilmember Hulse made the motion. And I didn't see your tie, so I called you Mr., so.
[laughing].
I'm impressed. Councilmember Hulse made the motion, and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes, thank you, council. Okay, up next and last on the new business is appointing a council, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Up next is Christmas holiday closure request.
Mayor Council, this has been something that has happened almost about as long as I've been here, almost 20 years. As you know, December, the Christmas holiday falls on December 25th, which is a Tuesday this year. In past years, it's been fairly typical that staff comes to the council and asks, anytime that Christmas falls on a Tuesday or a Thursday, we traditionally come to council and ask for that Monday or that Friday off. We are usually not busy the day of or the day, the day prior to or the day after. In this case, it'll be the day prior. People are out with their families shopping, many people are already traveling for the holidays. And what this does for a lot of our employees that are traveling, it allows them that day to, instead of coming back on Sunday, they're able to spend a little bit more time with their families and include that one extra day out. As you can see, I put a little historical perspective there, going back to 2003. This is not something that's unusual. It has been happening for quite a, well over a decade. And all, each of the departments, of course, absorbs their own costs when this happens. With that, I'll go ahead and entertain any questions.
Do you have one? Is it going to affect how I vote on this? But I'm just curious, there's no information on here. Is this a paid holiday for all employees?
This will become a paid holiday for employees, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that, you know, it wasn't paid for salaried, but hourly aren't going to get it because they weren't at work. So everybody gets paid for that.
Right.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, it'd be kind of interesting if we, dressed as we are, if we really.
Became courageous all of a sudden. I'm going to just pipe in here, because I have been employee with the city in numerous departments, and it is completely dead the day before Christmas. And I think if we close the buildings, we're going to make some savings on electricity and computers and all that. Not enough to pay for the overages, but it just seems appropriate then to have somebody come back for one day and then go back out again for family. I would approve this.
I would love to make a motion.
Please.
So I move to approve closure of the city offices on Monday, December 24th, 2018, as part of the city holiday with public safety and other essential services remaining staffed as appropriate.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Absolutely. Okay, next is, and last, is appointing a council representative and alternate to the city's applicant review committee. So this comes up on our agenda tonight with Linda Norman no longer being on council. She was the appointed one on this committee, the applicant review committee. And so in January, we're going to be looking at sort of a wholesale reappointment of all the committees and boards and everything that council members choose to serve on. But we wanted just tonight to go ahead and put this in, in the event that, we have many openings on some of our commissions, so in the event that something should happen between now and then, we'd like to have someone from this council and an alternate, since we didn't pick an alternate last time, serve. So do we have any, anyone willing?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm guessing that a lot of this is need-driven, but how often roughly do, does this committee meet?
Actually, the committee doesn't meet at all. What I do is I redact personal information from all of the applicants that we, or the applications that we receive, if we have an instance where there are more applicants than space is available. And then I either email it, or if we have someone on the committee that doesn't like to get emails, I print them out, hard copy. And then I send a matrix, basically of what categories you're scoring on based on your application, and you would just fill it out and send it back to me. And then I combine the scores together, and then those scores paired with the interview score here at council, or at the council meetings get added together, and then the top scoring applicants then usually get appointed to that board.
Okay.
So it doesn't actually meet in person, it's just doing some work behind the scenes. I would say in the last six months, there's probably been three times that we've done that. And we have one that's currently waiting. But it really just depends on how many openings we have and how many applications we receive.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, we all know this, but for the folks in the audience, the council member that serves on the applicant review committee will then recuse him or herself when the council does its interview and when we vote to appoint. Because we felt at the time like that would be double dipping if they were able to participate on both.
Right.
Any takers? Because, like, fighting each other to serve on this.
I can step up and do that.
If you can do that, awesome, Michael, thank you.
I don't mind being the alternate.
Okay. Fantastic.
I move to appoint Councilmember Matthews as the council representative. Can I appoint myself?
Sure.
To the applicant review committee and myself as the alternate.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Could have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes, thank you. Thanks to both of you.
And move we pay the claims adjustments?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, and Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All right, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry.